Have with us, the flags troop, Boy Scout troop four. Take over. Stand and join us.
Color guard attention, audience attention, troop attention, color guard forward march. Comprehensible. Color guard halt, about face. Please present the colors. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, please post the colors. Two, audience may be seated, color guard at ease.
Well done, troop four. Glad to have you here with us today. With that, we'll start with a roll call.
Counselor Tate.
Here.
Demas.
Here.
Zadi.
Here.
Shalata.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
West.
Here.
Alter.
Here.
Windorf.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. Counselors, first order of business, I would entertain nomination for council president.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I nominate Rob Zadi, counselor Zadi.
Second.
You think this was punishment? You guys conspired against me.
I think we have a nomination of counselor Zadi and a second counsel. All in favor of counselor Zadi is?
Voice vote?
Oh, it's roll call.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Here.
Shalata. Is that the other candidate? Was the other candidate? Oh, I vote for Zadi. Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Absolutely.
Alright. Congratulations, counselor Zadi. Mayor, you have your appointment.
Well, welcome aboard, counselor Zadi. And the good thing about being council president is to sit the right hand of the mayor. So, that's, uh, that's always good, all of his dirty work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thankful that I had the honeymoon here where everybody was on their best behavior.
Well, we appreciate the, uh, the work you've done as our president. Look forward to this year. Then with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting. Tailed December seventh, two thousand nineteen.
So move, your honor.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is gonna bring us to, uh, two thousand twenty council standing committees. Um, I don't know. Call you, Mr. President. Eric, President. Before you, um, I have given you a list of the council standing committees from the past year. Highlighted in yellow would be the changes for our committee. I'm gonna go through those and then at the end, uh, we did a vote on approval of them all. The budget finance commit- committee, uh, will consist of, uh, Mr. President, Rob Zadi, counselor West, and myself. As you go down to the Parks and Recreation Committee, uh, after speaking with counselor West and, uh, trying to come up, uh, with why the redundancy down in liaisons, this Parks and Rec committee was actually put together a while back when we had many projects going. I'm going to, uh, request to dissolve the Parks and Rec Committee and to maintain, uh, uh, councilwoman Windorf as our Parks and Rec liaison. And then, uh, for the liaisons, then the new liaison will be councilwoman Windorf, Parks and Rec. The insurance committee will change to counselor Savage, because he opted to, uh, make some changes, thought he was getting out of work. And then, um, the companion animal committee liaisons will be councilwoman Demas. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve standing committees as noted.
So move, your honor.
Do you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second called, is everybody in favor of the standing committee? Say aye.
Aye.
I'm afraid to ask, but is there anyone opposed? Okay, uh, welcome to two thousand twenty, those are your, those are your committees. On to our public hearing section of our agenda. Public hearing sections that are under, uh, item number one, we have a public hearing on a request filed by Gerhard Trubitzer of First Arrow Corporation for preliminary plan approval for college estates, closed twenty-seven lot, single family residential subdivision of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, of which will take action under resolution two thousand twenty two zero one, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, counselors, I'm, uh, Dan Kennedy with JFC Engineers and Surveyors. And I'd just like to thank you for the, uh, the, uh, opportunity to review this project. And if you have any technical questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Counsel, any questions on public?
Okay, thanks.
My name is Gerhard Trubitzer and I work for First Arrow Corporation. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Uh, and I guess at my age, I'd like to be anywhere, I'm happy to be anywhere. Um, I'm a, uh, resident of Pinedale. Uh, I do have a vested interest, uh, in the prosperity and success of, uh, Rock Springs. Uh, I think you have a challenging job in front of you. Uh, your community expects you to provide adequate housing, uh, job opportunities and, uh, a safe environment for people to raise their families. So, uh, any way I can help you in that endeavor, uh, I'm here always. My contact information is floating out there in the ether, so call me anytime, if there are any questions. Um, I'm here to help. So with that, happy two thousand twenty, thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, we have a public hearing on a request filed by Gerhard Trubitzer of First Arrow Corporation for the Rock Springs Master Plan Official Land Use Map, be amended from C Commercial to LDR Low Density Residential, and the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs be amended from B two slash B two CD Community Business to R one Low Density Residential for a property generally located southwest of the College Drive State Coach Boulevard intersection, consisting of about ten point eight two acres in Rock Springs, Wyoming, of which will take ac- action under resolution two thousand twenty dash O two and ordinance two thousand twenty zero one, turn to speak. Hearing done, our third public hearing would be a public hearing on a request filed by Philip Stanton representing Burn and Vala Stanton, that the Rock Springs Master Plan Official Land Use Map be amended from PRE Parks Recreation Environmental to LDR Low Density Residential and the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs be amended from R one Low Density Residential to R two Low Density Residential for the property located at two hundred Willow Street in Rock Springs, Wyoming, which will take action under resolution two thousand twenty three and ordinance two thousand twenty O two. Speak. Hearing done, we are going to move into petition section of our agenda. I would ask, is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak on any issue whatsoever? This is your time to do so. Troop four, gotta earn that badge. It's heavily dependent on the public hearing section. Hearing done, I'm going to close the petition section of the agenda and move on to the officers and staff reports, council, we have item number one, the animal control month report, monthly report for November two thousand nineteen and two, the Rock Springs Renewal Fund Financial Statement for October two thousand nineteen, I would entertain a motion to approve the officers and staff reports placed on file.
So move, your honor.
Do you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's bring us to the council committee and board reports, we have the item number one, joint powers combined communication board meeting minutes of November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Two, the joint powers telecom board meeting minutes of November eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Three, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. And I would ask, is there, are there any other council committee or board reports that are due or need to be noted at this? Hearing done, I would entertain a motion to approve the council committee and board reports placed on file.
So move, your honor.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's gonna bring us down to the correspondence section of our agenda, which we have, one, a letter from the city of Rock Springs to the Board of County Commissioners regarding the two thousand twenty specific purpose tax initiative, and two, a letter from the White WCA of Sweetwater County thanking the city for its support of the two thousand nineteen festival of trees. Council, I'd entertain a motion to approve the correspondence and place on file.
So move, your honor.
Do you have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? It's gonna bring us to the bills and claims, item number one, the bills and claims for January seventh, two thousand twenty.
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve the bills and claims for January seventh, twenty twenty.
We do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for January seventh, two thousand twenty, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Record show, item number two, the salaries for December twenty-third, two thousand.
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve the salaries for December twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for December twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm glad to see that we are back on track, on proper initiation. Next order of business is new business, uh, item number one, the request from the Parks and Rec Department for permission to fill a vacant recreation supervisor position at the Civic Center, council, what's your pleasure?
Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Move to approve this question.
Do you have a motion to honor this request, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the request from Parks and Rec Department for permission to apply for a Wyoming state forestry grant for community tree planting in the amount up to ten thousand dollars, councilor, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Uh, you might recall a few months ago, I made some comments about the trees at the golf course and that's what this, uh, looks like it's intended for, so I just wanted to say thanks to Dave and Mark for your work on this, and they found the grant, now it's our, uh, our turn to find the money, so just wanted to say thank you for that, and with that, I would move to approve this request.
Thank you, counselor West, we do have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three, the request from the Urban Renewal Agency for permission to apply for a state historic preservation office CLG grant for architectural and engineering fees related to the First Security Bank project, council, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request from the URA, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number four, the request from Black Rock Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation banquet on February eighth, two thousand twenty, from four PM to eleven PM at the Sweetwater County Events. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Tate. I have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number five, the request from the Fraternal Order of the Eagles Number One Fifty-One to extend their serving area along with a street closure to include B Street from Second Street to Broadway for membership event on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty, from noon to midnight, counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
I have a motion to approve this request, do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's gonna bring us down to our resolutions section of our agenda and resolution number one, resolution two thousand twenty dash zero one.
A resolution approving and accepting the preliminary plan requests for subdivision variances for the college estate subdivision as with the proposed subdivision located in the city of Rock Springs, Sweetwater County, Wyoming, covering nine point zero seven two acre tract of land located in section twenty-seven, pre-survey township nineteen north, one oh five west of six principal city of Rock Springs, County of Sweetwater, State of Wyoming.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Shalata.
I move to approve resolution two thousand twenty one.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty O one, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, roll call.
Counselor Zadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Abstain. Item number two, resolution two thousand two zero dash zero two.
A resolution amending the official land use map of the Rock Springs Master Plan C Commercial to LDR Low Density Residential for one tract of land total in eight acres and located in section twenty-seven, pre-survey township nineteen north, one oh five west of six principal city of Rock Springs, County of Sweetwater, State of Wyoming.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Zadi. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second, roll call.
Counselor Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Abstain. And item number three, resolution two zero two zero dash zero three.
A resolution amending the official land use map of the Rock Springs Master Plan from PRE Parks Recreation Environmental, LDR Low Density Residential for one tract totaling six thousand ninety-eight square feet located in section fifty, township nineteen north, one oh five west of six principal city of Rock Springs, County of Sweetwater, State of Wyoming.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Mr. President. Or, um, oh.
Ex.
Ex.
I move to approve resolution two thousand twenty O three.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand twenty O three, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, roll call.
Counselor Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Uh, item number four, resolution two thousand twenty dash zero four.
A resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute an agreement for dispersment receipt and use of grant with the Sweetwater County Joint Traveling Tour.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Approve resolution zero four.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash zero four, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, roll call.
Counselor West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. Item number five, resolution two thousand twenty dash zero five.
A resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute an agreement for dispersment receipt use of grant with the Sweetwater County Joint Traveling.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash zero five.
Would you have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash zero five, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, roll call.
Counselor Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Como.
Yes. And item number six, resolution two thousand twenty dash zero six.
A resolution accepting and approving memorandum of understanding between Sweetwater County, the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, the city of Green River, Wyoming, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the Rock Springs, to execute said memorandum of understanding to said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve two thousand twenty O six.
We have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty O six, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds been called, roll call.
Counselor Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Mayor Como.
Yes. It's gonna bring us to our ordinance section of our agenda, we have two ordinances, uh, both on first reading, ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero one, first reading.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs for one tract of land from community business below density residential R one, one tract totaling ten point eight acres stated as hereby described in section twenty-seven, pre-survey township nineteen north, one oh five west of six principal city of Rock Springs, County of Sweetwater, State of Wyoming.
Item number two, ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero two, first reading.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs for one tract of land from low density residential R one, low density residential R two totaling six thousand ninety-eight square feet located as hereby described in section fifty, township nineteen north, one oh five west of six principal city of Rock Springs, County of Sweetwater, State of Wyoming.
Counselors, I felt this is a good time in our new year of two thousand twenty to offer maybe a short mayor's state of the city address, two thousand twenty.
You were out here, right? I was just gonna say, it's not fair for the scouts to sit at such a short meeting, but thank you for saving that.
We, you thought you were gonna get out of here earlier, right? How many, raise your hand, who has homework still? Oh, boy, just one. Don't you know you're supposed to bring your homework to the city council? Dude in the back. Well, if you can make it through the mayor's state of the city address, you're, you're almost out of here. So we've come to the end of year one as your city council and it's honor to represent Rock Springs as your mayor and I look forward to the challenges ahead this next year. I commend our city employees, our elected city officials, and the many volunteers who serve on boards, commissions, and during all the events which take place throughout Rock Springs. These individuals have dedicated themselves to improve the quality of life for our citizens here in Rock Springs. I want to thank my family for once again supporting me in this endeavor and the families of our city council for the support they give our counselors as well. As always, once again, funding will continue to be an issue and we will take an aggressive approach to secure additional funding through the legislative process and search for available, available grants for worthwhile projects for our city. Overall, the state's economic conditions continue to decline, thus leaving less dollars for available, available for cities and towns. Direct distribution from the state will be a topic we watch closely to ensure we do our best to secure a fair share of the distribution from the state. Statewide unemployment is at three point eight and it seems as if the statewide economy is, economy is holding steady, yet with the many jobs lost in the coal and natural gas fields, we can be assured that the revenues to our state will continue to decline. We do see some growth in wind and solar, but we also know that these jobs are lower paid and may not replace those jobs lost in the coal and natural gas sectors. That being said, it will be our pan, plan to be as conservative as we can as we move into two thousand twenty. The state's general fund and budget reserve account continued to decline due to a sharp decline in oil prices in two thousand nineteen. Oil originally hit a high of eighty, eighty dollars a barrel in October of eighteen and now we hover around forty-five dollars, which is a result in less revenue coming into the state and also affects all sectors that apply and then support the industry and becomes a snowball effect once we hit fifty dollars a barrel, which we are. As activity in the industry is reduced, as we have seen with the loss of jobs in some of the very large scale oil and gas service companies located here in Rock Springs. As you all know, there are many cities and towns and counties battling for available funding from the state and we'll have to be creative and aggressively participate in the process in order to achieve our goals here in Rock Springs. In regards to the state of the city of Rock Springs, the most recent distribution for sales tax in November two thousand nineteen activity, activity was one million four hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred twelve dollars. This amount is nine percent below what we received in January of two thousand nineteen and thirteen percent below what we, we received last month. Sales tax has dropped twenty-five percent in the last two months. This puts us behind last year by approximately one percent, but we will continue to adjust as needed as we plan this year's budget. Our goal will be to continue working to improve the quality of life for our citizens and to ensure our infrastructure is in good shape and well maintained in a fiscally responsible manner. We've made positive changes in regards to how city departments function, which have saved costs that are now being utilized to improve services to the community. We'll continue to be accountable for taxpayers' dollars and transparent in all that we do. Our goal as elected officials is to constantly strive to improve the quality of life for our citizens to do the best to find funding mechanisms beyond just the general funds we have available. We've made great progress in securing funds to reconstruct the Bidder Creek and to eventually remove residents and businesses out of the flood plain throughout our downtown area and along the creek channel, all while eventually creating a much more appealing creek channel with walking and bike paths which will eventually connect the east side of our town to the west side of our town. We're also well on our way to reconstruct the First Security Bank building downtown, which has been a goal for, for us for well over ten years now and a very high priority for our urban renewal agency. After recently receiving support from the Wyoming Business Council for the funding phase one of this project, we will be meeting with the state land investment board this January for the final approval of funding to begin this long awaited project that will enhance our downtown and bring new businesses and revenues to our city. I thank all those who have helped make this happen and the support of the city council and look forward to the day when the lights and the heater back on in this building and to see the many patrons partaking of all this historic building will have to offer our community, including the many new events which will take place in Bancorp. It's always a gr- it's always great for us to preserve our history and to bring these historic relics back to life. The city has installed its first charging station for electronic powered vehicles in our downtown, which allows individuals to charge a vehicle while they shop, attend events, or visit our restaurants downtown with the only request being a donation to the URA Main Street Department, Alter and Mr. Kausich for your work. We have also installed a golf simulator that offers our citizens an option for recreation during long winter months. City leagues will begin shortly and we will, we already see many taking advantage of this opportunity. I thank the city councilors and staff that supported this project and worked to see it become a reality. It is also our goal to improve the lives of our pets. And beginning this year, the city will begin its path towards eliminating the gas chamber used to euthanize animals when necessary. Although the city rarely utilizes this chamber, the city will begin a policy to include expanding the lethal injection and trap, neuter, and release TNR programs for animals that find themselves in our shelter and cannot be adopted due to illnesses or aggressive behavior. The utmost importance is the safety of our employees in regards to these programs. Chief Pacheco has been directed to move in this direction and to find training for employees in regards to these programs to ensure the safety of our employees and the most humane methods possible for our animals. In regards to infrastructure- In regards to infrastructure needs in Rock Springs, there are many infrastructure needs which need addressed. Through many discussions with department heads, the city council has chosen six critical infrastructure projects to be proposed to the taxpayers this upcoming election through the specific purpose tax, which is avail- a valuable tool in raising revenue, which cannot be met through the general fund. The projects selected by the city council are valid and necessary and will improve the lives of our citizens. Please do your research, ask questions, and educate yourselves prior to the upcoming election to clearly understand each of these projects and the importance they have on the future of this city. We ask that you support these projects as they come before you on the upcoming ballot in November. I look forward to the challenges ahead and to work side by side with the city council, our department heads, our employees, and other city, county, state, and federal agencies in a proactive manner to improve this city, remedy our problems, and create a community that we can all be proud of. I thank you for your support and the support you've given to the city council this past year, and wish you all a very happy, healthy, with no further business, cupness before this council. Two four. You can now move.